It's six fifty-nine, I'm gonna call to order the Zero Council meeting of September twenty-third. If everybody could get a little call, a little, a little call, please.
Terry Mountley, here. Robert Hudson.
Here.
David Wilkins. Don Foreman.
Yeah.
Don Rogers.
Was it?
Landon Maxwell.
Yep, alright, if I get everybody standing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to take this mic for showing up tonight, and next on the agenda we have presentation from the Central Bank regarding multi-card system, I think that would maybe be Lori.
Clayton Drake.
Okay.
So, when I talked to Heather, she said an hour was good?
Heather's knowing you're wrong. Don't matter, a bunch of them will shoot you down.
I love her, but no. I was supposed to be brief, but probably go over just a little bit about Central Bank and the P-card offering that we'd like to put in for the city. For those that don't know, Central Bank is a thirteen bank holding company founded in nineteen-oh-two, landed last year, just short of fourteen billion in assets, and we've been one of the, ranked as one of the best banks in the country for the last ten years, by the Forbes magazine. Currently spread over five states, most of that's right here in central Missouri, and we started this program called Commercial Payments. One of those programs, one of the programs underneath Commercial Payments is what we'd like to offer to the city and maybe even offer the other half of the system at a later date, but right now it seems like the city's got a need for a true P-card program, and we have that offering through our multi-card. So we launched this program in twenty-thirteen, we have a couple of partners, MasterCard, we're exclusive MasterCard issuer and the largest municipal in Missouri. DXC technology helps us with card processing and physical plastics, and Lex helps us with backend technology. We own the Commercial Payments product suite, it is our, it is our program, process over forty-eight million a month, customers from coast to coast, we've also given several references to municipalities, counties, school districts, and different things for pre-year references. So, our multi-card is a customized plastic, essentially designed to replace all the card programs that the city has now, whether that be travel, entertainment, or traditional T and E type card procurement, purchasing, complete functionalities, you can build and declare your balance, virtual cards, and the best part about it is that the city can manage that line with different controls, variation of the spending limits, virtually everything about the program is customizable, I think that's what you like about it. So, ordering new cards, closing old, different restrictions we can put in place, all those limits can be changed on the fly, so if there ever was an issue like a false decline, we can go in and override it, really just a better program than what you've got now, should save you a lot of time in the data entry functionality of it, there's a free expense management piece that's built into it too, so individual cardholders could code their own transactions, upload receipts, all from the phone, tablet, computer, do it all, and it's, all of this is free to the city as well. We can implement the program in about five weeks, assuming that you adopt the program, so we've gone over specifics with Jerry and Heather, so. Our proposal is that we start at sixty-five basis points, being volume-based to go up from there, it is based on spend, yep, so there is potential for more revenue share back to the city, adding the other piece, which is called automated accounts payable, can increase that revenue share, but we'd like to put the P-card in place first and then move forward. So, just a quick summary, it is a customized P-card program, uses the city's charted accounts, a lot of time and money savings into it, I think you all have got a good background on the service expectation that we can deliver, but the city will be assigned a dedicated relationship manager in Jefferson City in addition to your local folks here. We think that we can return higher rebate revenue, implementation is easy, we just have a simple application that we'll need the city to fill out and review. Other than that, I've got my contact info, relationship management team's info, essentially every contact number you know that the city might need. Brief in summary, in a good summary, wanna begin with that? Okay.
I'd like to ask you a question.
Sure.
Install a program for internal investment for us, we've got major costs for a few PO costs, right, if this is the one they have in the right paper POs.
That is, sir.
The true cost. My, my question is, what is your average, would you say, that probably you would, you would attach to a fiscal PO cost, say, is it fifteen dollars, twenty, is it seventy?
That's a great question, so the National Association of Purchase Card Professionals, or the NAPCP, says that it ranges from forty-five dollars to two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars to cross up with a pure payment.
That's what we find in our business as well.
Historically, I've seen a hundred-and-fifty has been an average, it's been used for a while.
Yep.
And then, in a factory where you do receipting and all that stuff, it goes up, but just the processing paperwork and the accounts payable side of it.
The revenue side of the paper, what comes in, so you have man-hours or lady-hours, whatever you want to call them, I'll be, I'll be correct on that, but you have costs, you have costs associated with a transaction, the overall cost to do a business.
Very much so.
And so, this takes out a lot of that cost, is what you're telling me?
It certainly does, it certainly does.
Because it, because you're, we're paying you to use the card for transactions, but I want to be able to validate that we're still saving money, making ourselves more efficient, and become much leaner and lighter on our feet, by being able to do a P-card program.
Yep, and this is free to the city, there's no cost.
Yeah, I said there was no cost.
What, the revenue sharing, what is that, help us out there?
That's what comes back to the city, so it's like a rebate.
Okay, got it, okay.
You pay that monthly, to the direct deposit the city chooses. So it's not a, not a state credit or...
Good enough.
Yep.
But the spending limits and balance, or balance limits and stuff on the different cards, is that something that I pick up the phone and call somebody, or is that something that somebody would have access to?
Somebody, you're right here.
We'd have administrative rights within our system here for somebody to look up and do it.
Right, it would probably be Tara, right now she has administrative rights to all of our making information, and so, it would be something that we would get in writing, that we're going to increase this limit, and then she would be the one authorized to do that.
We have multiple program amendments to, separation of duties.
Generally, somebody leaves with a card, she can shut it off at that point immediately.
Instantly.
And is, is it pretty real-time when you do those transactions, so if somebody's called, truck broke down, and they were two hours away and had to use a credit card to pay something, she logged on and changed it, five minutes later they could process the card and maybe get it?
Less than five minutes, as soon as you hit save, it's real-time.
Good, clear.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for the presentation. Any questions or comments on that? Okay. Well, item four, discussion regarding road and sidewalk grant opportunities, I'm going to let, is this for, is this for you?
We have Don Jenkins, a NICO engineer here, he and I in my office did last Thursday, and he has some interesting, there's some opportunities that we might be able to take advantage of regarding any sidewalk grant, even road improvement grant, and I put some information in your packet regarding that information, kind of areas that we thought, this is just preliminary discussion, so of course the board would be able to discuss this more depth if we decide to go with trying to get grant funding, so, Don's here, just a little bit more about that.
At this point, I'm here answering any questions you guys have about any of the grants that we think are in your packet there. We talked about a CDVG infrastructure grant that can improve roads, we talked about a CDVG downtime evaluation grant, that would be a dollar-for-dollar math, but the, the dollar of the city fund would have to be private investment to then CDVG match the dollar for dollar grant amount. We also talked about a MoDOT sidewalk grant, like we've done in the past here for the city of Alexandria. The CDVG grant doesn't necessarily have an exact match on it, it's, they'll come in and show it to your funds, look to available funds and put, you know, how you put forth what you guys can for the project. The MoDOT sidewalk grant would be an eighty-twenty match, there is increased points per application if you go up to twenty-five or thirty percent match on the sidewalk projects, which helps in getting the project funded. The CDVG road project would be, the maximum is five-hundred thousand dollars, or five-thousand per house, effective, so any house on the street would be five-thousand dollars.
And typically, whenever they look at the, the road grants, they look at more like a whole area, the whole neighborhood area, so, one that we kind of discussed, one we thought right off the bat, this might be a way that we could possibly look at Campbell Street, so we wouldn't have that gravel road in town, and then possibly even looking at Central Street, fixing that all the way even down to, I don't know if we included Alco, I know Southwest Circle was included in that too.
The other thing, with it being a gravel street that we're looking to improve, to get it up to actually have an asphalt street and then have curb and gutter and stormwater involved, it's a lot of cost per foot for that, so if you get around to the neighborhood around it, where you're just doing some minor repairs and fixing some subgrade issues, the houses, five-thousand per house goes a lot further, you bringing the neighborhood around it too would really help out for the share of the project.
So what's our expenses as taxpayers in that?
For the CDVG project, it would be around twenty percent of the project cost would be from the city, and then the other eighty would be...
Let me, let me cut you all off right here, this is for us, your presentation's for us on the board.
Well, it says discussion.
It's discussion for us, it's not for the public, it's in the public hearing on this, so, question I do have for you, to make sure I'm clear, Heather, what we talked about in this, right? This is not going to distract from what we are planning to do to the roads, to get our roads caught up that exist today in the streets, and so it's right, cracked it or needing to be caught up, so this isn't at the expense of existing work that needs to be done, this would be above and beyond that we could get some potential helpful sidewalks, that kind of thing that's out there.
So, is my, is that the street that, where you're talking about?
Yeah, we just, and that was just a preliminary discussion, but that's what we were looking at whenever we were talking about this.
Something like getting the sidewalks, like to the parks and the swimming pool, something like that, we could block that whole sidewalk off and maybe get a grant just for that whole area, is that what we're kind of talking about?
Well, this road, this road grant would be more for the road portion of it, now the sidewalk grant, we could look at that, but the actual portion of the sidewalk grant we were looking at, that part, we are quite to discuss, I think during our budget discussions, because there is a need for that sidewalk all the way from Jefferson Street to the pool, and we've had that conversation with Earl too, but we may have enough money in our transportation sales tax budget for that. The one that we're actually discussing, and we've talked to Earl, he is very much on board as well, even if we need to do, I don't know if we can do safe routes to school, we'll have to see, but it's right along the highway, all the way from the country club, trailer park area. Probably to right in front of Worschlands, north of the highway.
That grant will come out around September twenty-twenty, and what we do till November first, so there's still a little time to talk about that one too.
Right.
And what would our costs be on all this?
The MoDOT project would be an eighty-twenty grant.
What would the city's costs on this be?
Twenty percent of the project.
And what would be, what would it cost us to get into developing this?
I haven't put in, I haven't put the project together to know, I guess, the exact cost on it, that would be, what, what we do on those grants is we'll put together an application for it, and that'll be a set price to do that application, and then the project itself would be twenty percent.
So, if we were to get a grant, do, we put all this effort and try to get it and all that, would we, and it didn't go through, would we lose money?
Yes, the money for the application, that would go through.
We would lose something. What kind of percent, I mean, I want like, five percent or...
Though, there won't be any, there would be a set fee, the application won't be covered under the grant, the application we paid for from the city.
Wouldn't be engineering costs, anything associated with that or any...
Well, there would be our cost putting together the application, putting together the cost estimates for it, preliminary maps and stuff like that.
Typically, what I was going through.
Trying to think, I want to think, I want to say it's twenty-one hundred dollars is what the cost of the application is for us to put together. I don't get an exact number on that.
We just won't be careful about getting on an hourly deal with you guys.
It, it won't be an hour of anything, that, that would be a much...
I'm kidding, I'm like, gotta, gotta get it.
We're not really for our twenty-twenty budget. The sidewalk down there, there's more and more families moving into the trailer parks, the houses, the townhomes, they're all over there, and yeah, there is no good way for kids to ride their bikes to school from over there, so I mean, there would be benefit of having a sidewalk.
I think if you've got kids, the first thing you think about when you get out there is, how do they get to the pool, how do they get to the bar, how do they get them all to practice a little bit on their own, especially if you get them loaded, it becomes very concerning, and that was one thing I thought of when that development started years ago out there, that would be, that would be the challenge of trying to get across Point Two, it'd be very concerning, right, so, it also, I think, makes the development and the growth out that way a little bit more appealing, without question, for the service factor to the community, so.
We moved here seven and a half years ago, so not considered place over there for...
Cause the highway, across the highway. Anyway, that's just, you know, this is just preliminary discussion, you know, it's an opportunity, we talked at the, the, the meeting that you talked before, so, we just won't look at all the options to, to better the infrastructure for the, the street sidewalks, transportation within the city of foot.
The, the CDVG street project would be due April first, historically when those are due too, so, it's a little bit smaller than the sidewalk project.
And we were talking about that area where Campbell, we've had a lot of folks from that area who was conservative of gravel road, which that ended up basically being a loophole in our ordinance, has allowed the gravel roads to end up in sedra, I mean, that's what it is, so I mean, we're stuck with, you know, if we want to have that moving forward, if we can do something about it, why don't we, if we can, there's not at the expense of streets that exist that need to be fixed, but I think we can do a lot of things with it, so, glad we're talking about it.
It might be worth it to set up maybe a subcommittee to see, so that we can discuss it a little bit further, and see if that's the area that we want to focus on, or maybe the committee might have something else, other ideas, so.
See, we talked about a couple other streets maybe that were needed, but for this project has to have a bound, kind of contain the area in that square, or the streets and outside, it can't just be this street here that really needs it, and that street there that really needs it, they won't let you do that kind of project.
If it allows our money to go farther with the matching, it's...
Get the matching funds, come with the grants. Yep, there's a cost associated, ends up if you don't do the project, you got to be built. We've known that before.
I mean, maybe if we do this, what's outlined here, maybe Boyd wouldn't chip in a little bit to help, because it's Columbia Street, you get...
Oh, no, we weren't including Columbia.
Oh, well, that's...
If it's, if it's in there...
That includes the railroad, that does not include Columbia.
Right, I didn't, I purposely, I was trying to make sure that I did not include Columbia.
That's a good thought though, I mean...
I mean, it's helped him out, and it's helped us out.
You have thoughts, questions?
I mean, on the time, we have some time to think about this, and this is for next year, correct?
Right, so if we decide we want to set up a committee, I think we should probably move forward to doing that within the next month or so, and really start serious discussions.
April's what you said, right?
Because if it's April first deadline, we would want to start working out probably January, very latest.
Yeah, absolutely.
We need to get right on this.
Yeah, I think so.
Christmas stuff's already out of store.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time. Item five, public hearing referencing closeout of community development block grant. That would be Mr. Lang.
Me?
Yeah, Mr. Lang.
Well, and just to kind of tag on a little bit briefly on his, as far as CDVG grants, it takes about six weeks to do the full application, so, that's kind of the timeframe for submitting those applications. So, for public, public hearing, this actually is...
So that being said, you're saying April's when we would have to have the application?
That's when it's...
Yeah, so we're talking about six weeks before that, they're gonna have to be working on it to be able to have it at that time, so now we've got a six-week winter where, that's what I'm saying.
We need to sort of get something going after the Christmas holidays.
Right, just to make sure we understand that that, that six weeks is...
Essentially, you run, sorry, I didn't mean to... We do CDVG applications, so, the, a lot of times we end up running these PERS, before we even bother with the application process, running it by the project managers at CDVG, like, is this a good project, what are your concerns, they, they look over the cost estimates, they look over the descriptions, and they kind of, yeah, this sounds good, but, ah, you've got sidewalks in this project, we don't really do sidewalks, we just do roads, or, then they kind of, they'll talk to you about your boundaries, and they kind of lead you in the direction where you need to go to make sure you're submitting an application that's valid, so that's, you need to save yourself some time for that, so. So again, this public hearing is to address a different CDVG project, which we are trying to close out. In March of two thousand eighteen, the city applied for a community development block grant, a CDVG economic development project, to help, to extend Randolph Road in aid of Showme Short Line's business expansion, it was a two-hundred-thousand-dollar grant award. During that process, there are two public hearings that need to be held to solicit public comment on the project, the first one was held during the application process, and actually you had two of these hearings, because I think you actually submitted applications twice on this project, once and it was declined, and then once when it was successful, so there was a hearing in two thousand seventeen, and a one in eighteen, so you have to have the final quote, have a final hearing for this, the closeout hearing. The public hearing was to inform the public about the project, explain what the city intended to accomplish with these grant funds, and discuss potential environmental concerns, all of those things were done during the original project. This meeting again is to solicit comments on the outcome of that project. So, I will give a brief project update, and again, feel free to step in if you guys have any comments along the way. The city decided to halt this project due to the increasing cost of construction estimates and the impact that it would have on the city's road budget and other priorities, these issues were discussed at the board meeting in July, on July fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, at that point, the city decided to halt the project. The grant funds will be returned to the state for reallocation, the cancellation of this project should not impact the city's ability to apply for future CDVG grants, you guys have done some of your due diligence on this project, you've got skin in the game, so CDVG looks at this and they're like, you're fine, as far as applying for other grants. You also retain the designs that you've developed for this project, so in case the issue comes up again and you need to do something with it, you've already got engineering designs. After this routine, there is a routine CDVG audit, we have the project file, which is available to the public for review, if anybody wants to see what's happened with the project during, throughout the course, we can make those documents available to the public. After the CDVG audit, we can give those documents to you, and you have to keep them for five years, or we can retain them, generally we've retained them for the cities, but again, that's something we can work out with you. So, there's a few things also that happened during closeout, but again, some of this stuff isn't required because the project was canceled. Proof of private investments, the Showme Short Line did actually complete the renovation and started hiring, but there's no need to show documentation for that, we don't have to, to look at contract hires, because there weren't any, we're completing the final public hearing now, the city did, as part of receiving federal grants, you do have to comply with ADA regulations, and you have to have accessibility guidelines available and grievance procedures, which the city has adopted, and those are on file, and I delivered today the, the packet of information and the final closeout stuff for the mayor to sign. Next steps, again, submit all of that to CDVG, and they will issue a letter that discharges the city from the applicant, from the grant. So, a few things that were done for this project, just to kind of recap what's been done, there were some engineering design work done, provided by Engineering Survey and Services for the road, we provided administration on this project for CDVG, which included the closeout documentation and the paperwork necessary for that, as well as the application initially, and we also completed an environmental review to make sure that it was okay to build in this area, so all of that work has been completed and built to the city. There are, there's no need to do job monitoring, job sites, job site, no prevailing wage, and everything else has been covered, so if anybody has any comment, this is where I can take that, and so we're able to respond.
Take the silence as no. Thank you. All right, we'll do, item six, comments from the citizens, is what we're up to now. If you folks haven't signed in, please do so, with your address and name, that you're hearing, if you could please, and so at this point, we'll take comments from the citizens, we want to keep them to three-minute comments, seems like this becomes debates, we just want your input, and then we will take that, I promise you, and get back to you and tell you what's going on from your input, but if you could make a comment, your point of interest or your concern, or whatever it may be, and keep it to three minutes if you could, okay? You're welcome to approach the podium if anybody has any comments with citizens.
Is this the podium?
That's it, right there. Just take your name and then your address.
Linda Grossklauser, Seven Kellogg Drive, I am happy to meet you in person, Mayor, and I appreciated talking with you on the phone, Mayor and I had a nice, hot conversation for about dash twenty, twenty-five minutes on our phone. I'm here because my father, who passed away in June, lived, and I grew up at Seven Kellogg Drive, it's a wonderful neighborhood, however, there's one house that is not only an eyesore, but a health risk, it's number six, no... Number four, Kellogg Drive, Cindy Hamilton owns the house, I don't know that she lives there anymore, I think she lives in Columbia with her daughter. My concern is, number one, the cats, which are feral, and run the neighborhood, and have fleas, they're constantly laying out in the driveways, and she comes in late at night to feed them, and she leaves the cans there, my neighbor who, I have a note from them, goes over and picked up almost a hundred cans, she comes in late at night, it's a, it's an odd setup, but, the other concern is a health concern, the weeds are overgrown, I've seen raccoons come and go in and out of the house, probably, it's just awful, I'm either gonna...
All of the Rogers and I followed a raccoon.
Oh, I bet you, yeah.
We, we witnessed it.
You witnessed it, I know, and it was probably right after...
I've never seen posses, raccoons, and very cats.
The racquet frames.
I know, I'm not telling you anything that you haven't heard before, and I know that you've just taken office, we've lived there through this though, for years and years and years, and I just really think now's the time to do something.
Well, Cindy is, Cindy can kind of give you guys an overview, this has been on the radar way before I've had nothing that I can bring a shining light on it, this has been a problem and been a nemesis for a while, and I, I think she might be able to give us a little bit, somebody give us a little bit of overview of where we're at, we're, we're...
That's kind of what I was curious, the timeline there.
We're proceeding forward hard to get something done here.
So the city has two options when it comes to nuisance properties, and so the end of the city code, you can either pursue it in municipal court, we have municipal court today, really the only outcome there is to find an individual and hopefully the find would motivate them to fix the problem, and if that doesn't work, the city also has an administrative abatement process that the city can utilize, where the ward of aldermen acts as the hearing body, and they hear evidence, they hear testimony, it's basically like a mini trial and a decision, an order is issued, and then the city can move forward to abate the nuisance, and generally what people are questioning, well, what does that mean, it means that the city pays to remove the problem on the property, that particular property, I understand, the city is also looking at as part of a possible grant for a demolition project, so depending on, you know, how that particular homeowner might react, they really don't know this particular individual, you know, she may be approached about the option being part of a demolition grant project, which would bring the property down in a different direction, that could hopefully not add a cost to the city, because that would be covered under a grant.
Right.
So, we are aware of it, I think there's a couple of options and routes, it sounds like, you know, this individual has not been in front of municipal court, that's an option the city could go, or like I said, the city could go the route of the administrative abatement proceeding, which basically brings out the biggest stick in the city's arsenal. which basically brings out the biggest stick in the city's arsenal, so if something remedies-
That's a discussion she and I had this morning, Heather, because the fact was, that things move too slow, and then people show up and you find them, and they don't do anything, and that doesn't bring a resolution to a hazardous issue that's costing people property value, go down, or be down, say yeah. So, I think that we're probably, at this point, looking to take matters into our own hands and be able to move this as quickly as you can in government.
It kind of makes me worried a little bit when I hear two years to apply for a grant.
Well, no, this is a different thing. No, this has nothing to do with the cat now.
A cat, okay, good.
They wish it for a great reason.
Thanks so much. It affects our property, our lives-
People that own it, they knew it never gets, so anyway, we're working on that problem. It's a nuisance, a problem, it's a concern.
Is there a timeline, like, do you think, within six months?
Well, just remember, I mean, I emphasize this to the mayor, property rights are an enshrined right within the United States Constitution, so you have to be very careful, very diligent, and very slow. Unfortunately, these are not quick issues to be remedied, because you are talking about someone's property interests, so-
Taking so much property, and, you know, we have got to give it a rise as Americans to, you know, we don't want to infringe upon that. But I can give you my word this, we will stay diligent if it takes two years to get rid of the home for the cats, and get that remedied. If it takes that long, we will do it. We're gonna stay, we're gonna resolve and get it done. I'd like for it to be done in six months, I wish I could tell you, we could go over there and tear it down in a month, but nobody can't do that. We're still trying to get it in our hands and be able to come down, and it will come down quicker than for me, but we're gonna go close down. So, it just takes something-
I just kind of feel like the seven houses on the circle that held hostage by this one.
I agree with you. But the problem is-
Our property rights have really been-
It's not in that the city hasn't noticed it and didn't want to, so I can't take a lot of credit, but all for this other, I'm pushing forward. It's been on everybody's radar, but it's here, and been here. Just, she's not very cooperative.
No.
The person's not cooperative, so we'll just have to-
It's been a problem for twenty years. Yeah, twenty years, at least.
Can I make a statement?
Sure, come right up.
Janet Oldman, Two Kellogg. This lady has been brought to municipal court several times years ago. There was a judge's order on this several years ago, that I have not read the actual order myself, but I was told that it was giving her so many days or weeks to clean it up. She didn't do it, so she was fined. This went on several times. The end result then was, if she didn't take care of it, the order was to, for the city to go in and clean it up. I think if you look back on municipal court orders, you'll find that. I've had my house for sale for a year, cannot be moved, that's one of the problems. It's costing me thousands. So, I think if you look back, the orders are there. We may be able to take that route or go a different route, but-
Pick it up from a bad judgment by a court. We'll find out for that.
And our code enforcement officer knows all about it as well, and she knows the dates.
Good information, thank you. Yes, come on.
Yes, my name is Gloria Joseph, and I live at Eight Kellogg Drive, right next door. And my grand, great-grandkids can't come over and see me, because of mosquitoes and stuff like that. And then, like I said, there's raccoons right across my yard, and it's a mess. And sometimes, when the wind blows, I smell a terrible odor, and the house is condemned and everything else. I mean, it looks, looks like a jungle there, and it's very unhealthy and everything, so-
She was asking if we get pictures so we can try to fast track the situation.
There may be, I mean, just from what I'm hearing from abroad, there may be a fast-track mechanism if the house is truly in a dangerous condition. And the ordinance, again, they're still property-
It's pretty bad.
Yeah, that's why I was just asking, somebody give those to me, we may be able to-
She's got a bunch, I'm sure.
We've got several from different-
I got a video of it.
The animals go in and out of the house, they can't keep them out.
Well, you can't, you can't get in the house, but there's a hole cut in the floors.
Yeah, and the cats and stuff.
You can't get to a door.
No, there's a hole cut in the-
And to try to get the back door, you'll get it on-
Under the crawl space, there's a hole in the crawl space, and then there's a hole in the middle living room floor, where the cats go in and go up, and they live there, and then they come out.
Right, that's been going for years.
And that's been going off in many ways.
And then the raccoons, they must live in her garage, because the garage was open, and she was sitting there having a cigarette, and my two grandsons that lives up in Kansas City, they were down visiting me, and they said, Grandma, do you know that woman's got raccoons in her garage? And I says, no, because I don't go over there. And those raccoons was running around, and she was sitting out there, didn't care. And I thought, what in the heck is wrong with that lady? She can't see them raccoons?
She probably feeds them.
I don't know what she does, but it's a mess.
Well, I think you, I think that we're fired up here in the morning more now, so-
I hope so.
She's excited, and she's excited, I'd get excited, and she thinks there's hope, because she don't give me false hope, because I'm-
Yeah, I hope so.
She's been out there asking her, oh, I'm waking, I'm sorry, check in with your regular basis about-
Cindy ever asked her that. She lived in her pant.
These are the longer songs, only testing I got when I ran.
She used to sit in that tree.
Because she couldn't get in the house.
Is there power and water?
It's condemned.
Very little.
Yeah, it's on the water there.
But anyway, we're gonna, we're gonna figure that one out, okay? So, any other comments?
Can we set some traps to try to help get rid of some of the-
I think they have traps.
What I was just saying, if you wouldn't contact, I can mean, I'm not trying to advocate for people for tasty animals, or whatever, pita, or whatever they call, you know, people for, ethically treatment of animals, or whatever you want to call it, but they do have traps, they will humanely catch them, they will assist you in rehoming the animals. Has anyone gotten them involved? Because some of them are also very costly.
Well, I think we'll have to ask Cindy about that.
That's gonna be a longer discussion than what we've got tonight.
Yeah.
What, assisting with trapping them?
No, I just, there have been a lot of cats caught there, but there's also a lot of cats caught there, with collars, with-
Because she's feeding, she openly feeds everybody, she does this all around town.
With local animals?
No, in the city alleys.
Yeah, in the city alleys.
She does this all over town. I didn't understand what was happening to all the cats in the lids that we seen, because I went back another day, and they were gone, but Leslie was telling me they were cleaning, it was up in there.
Right, my, my next door neighbor, Mike Freeman, goes over and just cleans some-
There'll be, there'll be at least a thousand, fifteen, a hundred, two thousand.
He does thirty and forty at a time.
Okay.
So she lives in Columbia?
Yeah, she, she told, she told me that she didn't live in Centaria, and that was, she didn't live- she told me very explicitly that she was a bode, and that I didn't knock on her door, because that's her cat's house, she lives in Columbia. And basically, that's exactly what I was told, that her cats, that cat house, that's where the cat house comes from. So anyway, let's move along. Yes.
I don't know if this is the right one.
Sure, come on.
My name's Wendy Pincada, I live at Eleven Hope Four East Booth. I don't, I didn't see this on the agenda, but I was told that you guys are gonna talk about it tonight. So, is there a proposal somewhere in the city about how many chickens you can have?
It's Thursday night, it's at the Planning and Zoning Commission, but yes.
Can I do my opinion tonight?
Sure, we're sure.
Okay, all right, well, I live on a four, I guess you would say four lot is what my house is on. And so, I, my understanding is, right now, it goes by square footage, and that the city is going to go to six chickens, and that's all you can have, and-
If you have, we're told about, if you have thirty thousand square feet, you can have six chickens.
They do.
No, I understand you do.
Okay, so, but now, I, by your city ordinance, I can have up to, I believe it's twenty-four chickens. And I rotate my chickens every year, and so, at any point in time, I can have up to twelve chickens, because I have to buy little ones, and some of them are roosters, and some of them are chickens, and you don't know right away. And so as soon as I find out they're roosters, then we get rid of them. So, if you would make an ordinance that I could only have six chickens, I can't rotate them. And I understand that there's, there's people that abuse, and they have chickens, like these cats that you guys are talking about, and I, and I get that, I totally understand that, but I would like to know if we could maybe-
I mean, is there a question between a chicken and a chick, I mean, that's like, you know, do you have like a cutoff for when a chicken becomes a chicken, like an age?
I don't, I don't know that. I don't, I don't.
The problem is, if you say you have six adult chickens, somebody have a hundred and eighty chicks from out here, horses run in them.
Right, all right. But I would like to, for you to consider maybe putting in there that you could maybe keep it the way that it is, but you could give the police officers, um, leniency, that if they would, that if they would see that it's an abusive situation, or if it's someone who doesn't keep their animals clean, that the police officers could go in and, and they would have jurisdiction, rather than having just a blanket six, and that's it.
There's not a lot of thirty thousand square foot lots in Centaria, okay?
I understand that.
You can have a horse, too, if you want to get one.
I know. I don't want to take.
I think I can, I think I can, I stand one.
I don't, I don't sell my chickens, I don't sell my chickens, I give them to all of my family members.
Maybe it's not six, we'll, we'll, we'll talk about it, under advisement.
Okay, I, I understand.
Got you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, anybody else want to talk about anything? Come ahead.
Kenny through the eight twenty Emeralds, Centaria here. I have some property on the corner of Highway twenty-two and Columbus Street, and I have an issue with some easements there, and I'd like to get it resolved, or she isn't getting working on it, work on it. But I've been talking to Don Bone on it, and he's, he's knowing more about it than I do. So I'd like to turn it over to him, that he could tell you what's going on there.
Well, we did do a title search. We did do a title search on this property, and our city reviewed all the information, so, you go ahead and tell what you have, or talk about what we-
I don't know, the same information.
Tell, tell me what factors, yes.
Not that I don't have it in front of me, but I mean, it showed, if I remember recollection, that there was a valid easement that was provided to the city on partial that I believe you wanted to close.
Yes.
Yes.
There, there is a description that is in one location, and the alley is physically located in another location.
There are two different ordinances, what, there are two, or there were two different vacation, there, there are two different descriptions. One started off further north, and then the second one moved it further south.
Okay.
So, in, in the current location where it's at, from what we understood.
But the first one was, they were vacated, so it goes right to the middle of the blocks. I mean, it's not a lot line, but he owns three lots there.
This portion of it is vacated, and then the lower portion was not, but I think it's-
Well, the alley north and south was vacated.
Right.
Then an alley was written in that went through the second lot from the north. And was there a third one, another alley that was put in that went through the correct place?
We're looking at six, right? There was basically, it used to be six lots, and then the alley ran through the center, if I remember correctly, and then there's a T road down at the bottom.
Right.
And so, he owns lots eleven, twelve, and I think thirteen. And so, the, again, I'm trying to do this off of memory, so I apologize, so you've got three others that are more in L shape, correct? And it's the lower portion of that alleyway that's, it would be nine, eight, and seven, correct? So the values eight and seven?
Um, I'll just check it, I'll whip it up, I'll find it for you. And I can show you on the map here. Here, let's look at the map.
That's up over here.
Kenny?
Yes?
I'll be glad when we get to-
Here's the three lots of yield.
All right.
The alley was vacated from here north, and an alley was put in here. And then you're saying that there was another alley that was put in at this location, which is where it presently is located?
That's, if I, if I understand the reading of the title search correctly, that's correct, and that this piece here, I think, actually still exists.
It still exists, yes.
Those, that L still exists.
Yes, that's, except for it's been closed for years and so-
Right, but it still exists on paper.
But, but if this was not vacated, it needs to be vacated. This portion going north should probably be vacated.
I don't disagree, but I think we found in an ordinance in nineteen sixty-three-
Yeah, sixty, there was one sixty-three and one in fifty-five. There's the one from nineteen sixty.
Yeah, and I had to get the actual description, this one was vacated in sixty-three, so that's been popularly done, but to your point, Alderman, Norman, I don't think this was ever vacated, and I don't think it was clear that this was properly vacated.
Well, no, it was not properly vacated, that was just done recently. Right. So, Kenny is more than willing to leave the alley open for the city's use, but he would like it vacated so that it'd be closed for private people out there, because there has been a problem with, apparently, people selling drugs out of the one garage back there, and a lot of people were using that alley. And Kenny was trying to close that alley or keep those people from using it, which I don't have a problem with.
It's through traffic.
Right, but the city still would like to keep the alley as far as getting in and out for maintenance purposes. Kenny's willing to let them have, the city have easement for it, but it wouldn't be a public easement.
So, there's eleven.
Then we get, talk about maybe putting the gate up, but is that not-
No, you can put the gate up if it's a private, if it's a, if it's an easement that is only for the city to get jobs.
Is this a planning and zoning, though, situation?
Yes, it would have to be.
So I would suggest at this point, that we talk about the planning and zoning meeting Thursday this week.
Well, it's still gotta be a public hearing to argue it.
Right, we can bring up, there's been mentioned that we need to have a public hearing, we can plan a public hearing. We'll get this wrote some more, we'll get this, this easement, some more. I was intending on going down the road again, but we'll get, that's what we have to do, I mean, that's where it's gonna end up.
But we have to have language written up so the city can still use it for their purposes, for ingress and degress from the utilities.
Yeah, and that'd be a plan, so-
But it's not something that's hard to do.
Your folks, I'm sorry.
Take care, everybody.
Thank you all, very nice. I have a paper here. I want to speak to my neighbor.
Sure, sure.
Appreciate hearing.
Wait a minute.
I think it was at the last public works meeting, they was talking about asphalting Gano Chance out to whatever that other subdivision is out there. Is Gano Chance in the city limits? And why are we paying for it? Because Gano Chance on our side of the railroad tracks is in the road district.
It's in the city limits.
Oh, you didn't tell me that.
You did.
Are you shy about that?
Don't you all listen?
The night show is meeting.
You're gonna have a special meeting, you're old.
Oh, no, it's fine. Okay, well, I'm gonna let that, we know this.
Dale, did you get that?
Please don't, Jane.
It'd be horrible, put in the papers, front page.
I know.
The spew.
Okay, another thing, I know that when Reiden Howard was going through the city, doing all their digging and destroying, they were made to fix a bunch of stuff. Seller Neck is now going through, doing the same thing. Well, they busted out a bunch of sidewalks, and right now, they've just placed back the sidewalks, but I want to make sure that somebody follows up on that and replaces them.
Yep, we'll give a mic use.
And I apologize, it said discussion on the agenda, and so I thought that, no, you told me I'd shut up, so I'm just telling you.
I'm trying to, see, when we get here, we gotta do it, I got a lot of situations.
Well, it said discussion, I didn't know who could discuss it or whatever.
I got you.
But, yeah.
Yeah, well, we gotta kind of-
No, I understand, Chris, that's a side one, but anyway, I don't think I had anything else that I really needed to talk about right now.
All right, now- All right. Now, any more comments, sentences? Okay. Now we're at, uh, seven, discussion regarding anti-tethering. I'm gonna give that back to you, Heather, because didn't we have some, uh...
We had some more, um, comments about it. We didn't want it to get, um, lost. Um, because we had, you know, we had our public hearing on it and we just haven't really had a chance to bring it back up, I don't think. Um, so in your packet is, um, another, actually, Susan.
Could I, could I maybe speak before you?
Yeah, you can. If, uh, yeah, go ahead. I mean, but if you're gonna tell us about...
No, I'm not gonna.
I mean, I mean, we, we get it, I mean.
You know, I looked up what, um, you know, a good pet owner is for the humane society in the United States. And yes, having, uh, shelter and food and fresh water, those do, you know, make for a good pet owner. But also it said quality time. And, you know, I, I've been on the other side of fence. When I was teaching in Fayette, I went through a bad divorce. I moved out of the country where my dogs could run free. And during hunting season, I put them in a kennel so they didn't get shot by the farmer next door, whatever. And I moved into town and I had a collie and a chocolate lab. He was my service dog from when I was in the building. And I had, I put them in the house, but they liked to chew stuff up and they liked to, you know, they were housebroken. So I had made a decision. And I provided them with the shelter and adequate bedding and food and water. I was even fortunate enough to, during my lunch break, you know, from the school, to go home and check on them. But when I got off work, my dogs came in the house with me. So, you know, I'm, I understand that you can be a good pet owner and have your animal, you know, and have to have that need to have it out during the day. You know, we do have good patterns, but it's unfortunate that in this town, the bad outweighs the good.
I think that where we've landed a little bit, Heather's gonna, I think, speak to it a little bit, of, it was the time constraint, okay? I think was the problem we were having with people that have outdoor hunting dogs and, you know, those kind of things. Uh, we're, we're in Centray, Missouri, okay? We're out in Columbia, you know, and we have, we have, this is an agriculture town. People hunt and fish, they, they got animals for that and they love that kind of weather. And I think we need to try to get some middle road here.
My dad had ten dogs, yeah.
And I think that's what you're saying, because we've talked, right? And I think Heather's kind of took what was said at the last meeting by the public and kind of were trying to find a middle ground to where Sandy could go in and force something where somebody's not being a good owner or something, right?
Right. And like I said, unfortunately in this town, the bad outweighs the good. And, you know, the story behind most of these dogs are, oh, we get a cute little puppy and we take it home. We let it chew on stuff. It, it's a housebroken, so what they do, they put it on a chain in the backyard. They say, oh, it's a guard dog. What kind of guard dog? I mean, does he unhook himself to go, you know what I mean? So it's unfortunate for the good people, you know, that there's so many bad that have to be policed and, you know...
But, but it's gotta be done. There's people who have children, should have children. And so, you know...
Well, it's like the socialization, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I went to the farm family and they had their dogs tied up and they never got unlocked the chains. This was their life twenty-four seven in the country. And as soon as they got loose, they went and chased cattle. Well, those are two dead dogs.
Yep, my dead dog won't get it.
So, you know, I'm not against, you know, like I, I had to do it. I had to do it myself, so...
So you, you know, I think if she comments, I think it might help.
Well, I sent her some information about some, some towns, like say from seven PM to seven AM. Dog can't be tied up. Now, I'm saying exception for, like you said, sporting dogs, you know, because my dad had ten dogs and they couldn't be running loose, you know, what they're bringing. Um, so, yeah, there are some things that may be, and I thank you all for really, you know, wanting to solve this problem.
We're trying, we're trying to find what's right for the most majority of the people. We can't go to one side or the other and be galvanized there because it, it, it isn't fair to, to all the responsible people and...
But life on a chain twenty-four seven for a dog. I mean, even if it's a couple hours a day they can get loose, you know, have some socialization. You know, and that, just like Melody had taught before, you know, there's a dog that's tied up down from my granddaughter's house and she's afraid to walk down that street because this dog is aggressive on that chain.
Sure.
I mean, the people across the road, he has a pit bull. It pulled a little dog through the fence, you know, where it was chained at and killed that little dog.
We got you.
So, I just, you know, I appreciate y'all.
I think we're all over. I think we did it.
Okay, and I'm gonna listen to it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for letting me speak.
Yep.
So the changes are in the packet. The information that I started with is what we had at our public hearing. Then made changes from that. Um, had discussion with Sandy and, uh, Chief Fies, Lieutenant, we've all kind of, you know, had a hand in some of these changes. Um, first one, number one, struck through that first sentence. Sandy said that that sounded a little contradicting. Uh, that no animal may be tethered as a primary method of restraining the animal from any property. So just, uh, we struck through that. Um, we took out a time limit. Um, just said unless it has been provided with food, shelter, or water suitable for the animal. Um, struck out number two. We felt like that was another one that, um, had been of concern during the public hearing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, added that they, a, a timeframe, so that they could not be tethered from the hours of, we said ten PM to five AM. A lot of the, um, examples that I found said six AM, but we start collecting trash at five AM. So I figured five AM was better. It kind of fit with our situation and maybe a little bit better. We already have those things going on. Um, and then we had originally thought about, um, adding the temperatures in there. Um, and then, and, and also adding during any, um, heat or wind chill advisory. But then eventually after some discussion with Sandy, took out the temperature part of it and just said during any heat or wind chill advisory or watch or warning issued by the National Weather Service to kind of take that into account. Um, let's see. We took out number eight. We had a lot of comments on that it may not be tied to an inanimate object.
Can we go back to number four?
Yep.
It says either nylon or leather.
Okay.
There are dog chains out there that are not log chains that are made for tethering dogs. We had a dog that, if you put a leather on a, uh, tether, he'd be out there within fifteen minutes.
Number, number four is talking about the collar, not the chain.
It's referencing the harness and collar.
Type of collar or wire harness, that struck that.
Yeah, that's a good point, yeah.
Okay, so that's okay. Um, and then the, um, entire second section was added. Um, that we would not prohibit them on a running line as long as they have swivels at both ends, that they won't be entangled, has adequate access to housing. Um, chaining, uh, in a camping or recreational area, that we would not prohibit that. So number three, we added because of that timeframe. You know, we had already said that they could not be tethered outside between the hours of ten AM and five AM. However, what happens if there's some sort of emergency at your house and you have a water heater that breaks and you've got to get everything out and you need the dog outside so you can take care of what you need to take care of? So we added this in so there can be that exception to that situation or some situation like that where it could be if this, uh, a reasonable period.
Are you gonna allow for standard, uh, for daylight now?
It's just for during the timeframes. We, we observe daylight times where they say daylight, so...
It says standard time, though.
Okay. Um, and then number four, I thought was a good compromise because it says that they can be tethered while they're training for an activity that is connected pursuant to a valid license issued by the state of Missouri. And I felt like if we added that, that would, um, help encompass our people who have hunting dogs because those dogs are being trained for something that, that's a valid license, uh, you know, valid hunting license. Um, and really, we just need to give, um, it'll probably be complaint driven, so if, um, you know, obviously if we're out patrolling and somebody sees that this is going on, but most of, most of this is gonna be complaint driven. So the officers would have, would be able to use their own discretion if they are called to, um, a complaint that, that are gonna go. So, open for comments.
One thing I think of when I read through this was Mr. West was here when we had our open forum. He would not be compliant with this. He does not have his dogs in at night.
That's true.
And, uh, this is a man whose, his dogs are outside and have differing opinions on that. I keep my dogs inside, so have different opinions on that, but this is a man who obviously cherishes his dogs.
If he wanted to have hunting dogs?
Yes.
Yes. If they're not gonna come inside.
And he made it very clear that his, his wife would not want his dogs inside, if I remember correctly. Maybe that was land in there.
I'm not getting divorced to bring two coonhounds in my house. I'm telling you that right now.
But doesn't he fall under that?
When you have hunting dogs, they're not inside dogs.
Ten PM to five AM. And that's, the, the wording on this says they...
I mean, I can let my coonhounds out, but the police department's gonna be tired of chasing me around town when they're treated in trees around town.
So how do we change that to allow for that?
Because I'm his neighbor and I'll tell you that he loves his dogs and he is out there and he runs his dogs and that his dogs like being out there. And if you do this and he has to put his dogs in a cage outside, then it's going to bother me because he's going to barter all night. And I'd much rather have him tethered because he's a very, he's, he's a much happier dog. So I, I don't know where that fits in with everything else, but his dogs, oh, I've lived there for thirty years now. He has not abused his dogs. His dogs are well, uh, exercised and I don't see a problem because there's no abuse there.
That was the one thing I saw when I read through this, because that's the struggle. We're trying... There are certain issues that I think we can address. We're not gonna be able to address every one without hurting goods, citizens, and care for animals. We can't address...
Doesn't it boil down to some common sense of what you impose against somebody to? I mean, the police officers do that all the time. They have to take a look at the situation and the circumstances. Help me understand, Bob.
Mr. Mayor, I, I would say this, okay? I think all we need, I, I think Susan referred to the dogs last year, last winter, when the wood dogs were out in the snow, they didn't have, and there was absolutely nothing to do because they had food, shelter, and water. If we are empowered to, which we are, if you go to see, it says, you know, police officers are empowered to strike here upon any prior premises except inside buildings thereof where they have reasonable cause to believe there's a case of animal neglect or animal abuse. Okay, so I think we're covered there. But the fact is, is, all right, now I'm gonna go, and I'm gonna take your dog. Um, hmm, what am I gonna charge you with? Well, okay, animal abuse neglect. Well, then we come back down to this. And the tethering thing has nothing to do with the animal abuse or neglect.
Good.
You know, as long as we are empowered to use our common sense, which I hope all my officers have, to say that there is a, this is a case of animal abuse or neglect and we charge them as such, um, do I end up with an animal for law? Yeah, probably so. End of pound. Um...
But everybody has a right to their judicial process if they feel they did wrong and they charged with the...
And, and the fact is, is if we write them a citation for the animal abuse neglect and say, okay, now correct the situation while I'm here, and I will take your animals. Like I said, there are ways, we just have to be flexible about doing it.
But if we leave this ten PM to five PM?
I don't, I don't agree with that. I, I don't agree with the ten PM to five AM.
There's animals that, that stay out twenty-four hours.
Like I said, I, I don't necessarily agree with that.
There's nothing wrong with it.
And like I said, that, we kind of left, I think we kind of left that in there for discussion with you all, because the fact is, I, you know...
We can, we can take that part out, so if that, I mean, if that's the hangup, then that would help.
Because I will tell you, the fact is, we get more barking dog complaints between, of course, ten PM to five AM. Because some people do leave their dogs out.
Right. And I understand.
And we can answer those. If your dog's barking.
Well, it's a nuisance.
Take it aside.
Yeah, yeah, got you.
It's a noise complaint then.
Yeah.
So we have stuff there.
But the...
It's, it's a difficult...
The problem, let's, let's go back to the crux of the real problem from the last meeting, if I'm correct. And that was, there was not, there, there needed to be a mandated time, a period of time for a dog to be able to be tethered. And it couldn't, there had to be some timeframe so the dog would be socialized and be cared for and brought in. And then, you know, so here we are now again. If you do that, they would sit on the other side, uh...
But, but I know people who have hunting dogs.
No, no, I grew up on a farm. I, I, I get it a hundred percent, Don. I agree with you a hundred percent. I agree that that's the Achilles' heel of this thing because we, we're an agriculture area where people do have hunting dogs throughout all the time. Land's dogs are out all the time. This would affect him periodically. Um, the people that have those kind of animals, you know, I, I, the time thing is what ends up with the anti-tethering part of it, you know.
And I could see if you got a house dog or, you know, not a hunting dog, yeah.
Well, maybe, maybe, maybe we might, maybe we might put an exception for breeding there, you know.
How many breeds are there?
Forty dogs.
And we, we're gonna have to come up with something that's easily do it worse. Right now, we're making this more and more convoluted, no matter what you do. And I do not want to pass something that says, oh, well, it's gonna be thirty minutes like the last one we looked at. But then, oh, but Bob, ignore it if it's, if it's not a bad situation. That, that doesn't work. We know there are dogs in town that have major towing chains around their necks. We need to address that.
I agree.
That is wrong. And right now, our current ordinance doesn't allow us to address that.
There's pictures of that for them.
Yes. We know there are dogs that are left out in the winter that are not equipped for it. Same environments are not. How do we fix that? I don't know if we can fix every other little detail that's been brought up.
I agree.
But those are two types of things that we can fix without analyzing Mr. West and others. Land and, I mean...
There's a lot of people.
Maybe we, maybe we need to pass a law for people and say that in order to have a dog or a pet, you must have common sense. Don, if you get that passed, please become a state legislator. It could be something on a statute. But if, if I may, one more thing. The fact is, I had a really good conversation actually with Wendy's husband the other day. And we were talking about this thing. It was last week when it was ninety degrees, but humidity was down and everything else. Well, he, he told me, the dogs, that's what we love it. They'll, they'll sit in the backyard and they'll sit in their little pool or whatever. I kind of see them in a lounger. I don't know. But, but, you know, the fact is, is that they would rather be outside than they would inside. And the fact is, okay, if we put eighty-five degrees, well, sorry, Mike, you have to put the dog inside. But that's where I came up with the heat advisory, wind chill advisory.
I like that conversation. I think that's smart. I think that's...
You know, so the temperature thing, I don't, I don't think is a big deal. The time thing, that's...
The time thing's what we're gonna decide.
Where we're gonna end up at.
Can I say something?
Sure.
Like, um, for the, like, if I was to call the police department and say, okay, there's this family live next door to me. They never are out there by their dog. The dog's out there twenty-four seven. Um, we know that it's being neglected. That's neglect. So, but for the people like her husband, you know, your husband and Mr. West that are doing their, you know, what they're supposed to do and running their dogs and playing with the dogs and loving their dogs and having swimming pools, I mean, yeah, they need, they shouldn't be punished for those bad ones that are. But there should be something that, myself as a neighbor that is reporting that poor dog that's back there twenty-four seven, he doesn't have anyone running with him, he doesn't have anyone playing with him and, you know, he gets no time off there, that something can be done to those people specifically.
I would love to find something that can. There's a dog right around the corner from me. Lives in a five-by-five cage, never gets out. The dog's digging holes, trying to get out. It whines. I mean, it's completely neglected. I would love to like figure that out, but how do you do this without analyzing everybody else?
If it is, I mean, it falls in neglect. So if they could maybe put something in there that says, okay, this dog is being neglected, we've had, you know, if it can be, you know, prove of that doubt that that dog is being neglected by that, you know, thing, maybe he can be a citation, get a citation or something like that. I'm not against, you know, tying your dog out and it running, you know, it wanna run and things like that. But when you've got a dog that's this tall and that big and he's got a log chain on his neck, that big round, and he's in a pen, then there is a problem with that.
And that, and that's, that's addressed here.
That we can address. How do you address the... That we can address, how do you address the dog that just nobody goes out and plays with? I don't know how we legally.
I don't, I don't.
I would take.
I don't know.
That's the.
I don't see, I don't see there's a way, because, one, I have to give a case to a prosecutor beyond reasonable doubt, how am I gonna make that case? Um, if I go, and the dog has food, water, and shelter, and looks healthy, what else am I gonna do? I can't just watch it for three or four, five days to see if anybody goes out and plays with it. You know, I can't do that. Don't even, don't even, you're thinking of something.
No, I'm not, I'm thinking this is maddening, that a few people that are irresponsible are causing this much pain and suffering for the majority of people who do they prey, the majority.
Yeah, if we were to take what we have and add the log chain, and add the, um, freeze advisory, or whatever we wanna put on there, that will address a good chunk of issues.
The change in the weather, extreme weather, that kind of thing, that's a socialization, it becomes a lot harder thing, because what does that mean? I mean, right, you know, I mean, I don't know, I mean, there are people that are gonna have dogs, they're gonna have what you say, and they're gonna meet the requirements, they're gonna take the dog off the log chain, probably not. I mean, they'll take it off the log chain, because then it'll get away, and we'll have it, we'll have to catch it, you know, or something, because that's what happened, those dogs are gonna get loose, because they, they, they're like small bowl holders, you know, I mean, it's for strength and ability, but, so, I mean, I think we take the time thing out of it, and we move forward with common sense, and we take, we take care of the chain, extreme weather is in there. If there's a heat advisory for pets, or there's one for, because of the temperature, they have, they have, for livestock and everything, they, they have for outdoor animals and so forth, they have a, a cutoff where that begins, at such a degree of cold, or such a degree of hot.
Of course, I've seen dogs that probably need a log chain.
Oh, I know, or people need one. Particularly to that, but I mean.
Well, I don't say anything.
So, I, and that's what my thoughts are, I agree with you, I think we've tried really hard, and we've lamented over this a long time, I think it's time to do something with it, and move on. And I think that we, and we have Sandy, you know Sandy, the people that know Sandy, know she's gonna do the best, and enforcing the ordinance is for the right thing for the animal, no question in my mind. So, we take the log chain out, with the weather thing, we addressed a couple of things, no, the dog could be tethered, but unfortunately, we're appointed, I don't think we can do it otherwise, with the timeline.
Could we look at redefining animal neglect?
I think that's what you might have to do, is try to.
Consider it, uh, uh, undersocialized, or whatever, on interaction.
I have, and this is the information Susan gave you, it's very helpful, uh, it was from the Humane Society, but there are just examples of things that, um, from other cities and counties, that, you know, they consider animal abuse or animal.
I'll tell you what.
You can add that into.
Why don't, why don't, why don't we look at adding that in, and at the next general council meeting, we'll review it, and we'll, we'll move on.
Well, this doesn't actually go in place, but that's right.
Right.
No, so I'm saying, why don't we do that, and we'll.
I can, I'll bring it back to committee.
So, the weather advisory, we gotta restrict the type of tethering.
Right, and we are.
And then something with the fine neglect that would address the issue.
And can add in socialization, we're talking about socialization, how much interaction is that we're getting, and that is gonna be suspect, but if somebody's. I mean, it's.
I, I don't, I don't know how we.
I, I, I understood, I understood, I understood, maybe this guy's something that we can kind of address.
Yeah, I recognize it.
Right.
So, the weather advisory, all, all, weather advisory is for all dogs, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Hunting dogs and all.
It would be.
But, but you have your dogs in the house, like they have in the house, so that's.
They have heat in the wintertime, and air conditioning in the wintertime. I mean, they've got a better night with, I think.
Matter of fact, you liked the game.
Yeah, I know.
I like Don not communicating with his wife. And I'm asking questions he should have helped her with already, come on, Don.
You didn't ask me.
Oh, come on, Don, you'll be working on it.
Okay, okay, thank you all so very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll, we'll talk about this, too.
Yes.
Come on.
I may come back, I may show up on Thursday, I like.
Uh, now we're down to, yeah, tethering's over, good, now we're to consent agenda.
Only change I would make on the consent agenda, minutes for the Public Works and Public Utilities Committee meeting, I called the meeting to order, I did not make the motion to adjourn. That would have been Mr. Wilkins, I believe, because Landin seconded it.
We don't know, I was listening, I didn't cancel it for it, it went fast. I mean, the, I mean. I'm sorry, I'm just, I was giving a personal lead on the other thing.
All right, well, I have a question on the, uh, on the minutes from, from the last regular meeting. There was two bids for heating and air conditioning, and the higher bid was the one that was taken, somebody explain that to me?
Part of the discussion was the brand.
Yeah.
One was Stevens, and one was Hancock.
And, so, what was it about the brand?
Stevens, Brown.
Was Lennox, was Lennox and the other?
Goodman. Good, yes.
Okay.
One had better warranty, you know, wasn't it?
Did both of them meet the specifications for the city?
Or is it being certified, or what are you saying?
Well, I assume there was a set of specifications put out as to what they were bidding on.
They were about eighty percent efficient premises, yes.
Then why did we go with the higher bid?
The Lennox one, it's a better brand than it is, but.
It's a better brand than your opinion?
That aren't your sense of.
Uh, there was quite a few people who commented on it, and I did extensive research a couple of years ago when I bought it, the only reason I bought it.
They used a better Goodman.
Only reason I bought the Goodman was because it was the only thing that fit in space that wouldn't require me to move my hot water heater and other stuff at this point in time.
But if, if Hancock's met the requirements of this bid, we can't specify a Lennox, it's gotta be a Lennox or equal.
We didn't specify a Lennox, we said.
Then, then Hancock's would have done what the bid required, right?
Technically, yes.
And it depends on, in the new procurement policy, and the old one doesn't include responsive fitters, and, um, the amount of time it took to get both bids. Hancock would not admit that.
But he did under the circumstances that were here.
And the Lennox had better warranty than the Goodman, right?
And it looks to me like, I mean, three months ago, you guys said, no, the price is what we gotta pick, now, it looks like we're picking favorites. That's illegal.
I'm not familiar with that.
Sure, he doesn't look right to me.
We had a discussion, and based on the people who were here, the opinions of the brands and the products that was available, the warranties, and everything that was discussed, the three hundred dollars or so that what was worth buying was believed to be a better quality brand.
It's four hundred dollars, and that's getting close to twenty percent difference.
It's like four hundred dollars that scrolled past.
But it sure seems like it's not okay to pick a local guy one time, and then the next time, we get to pick whoever we want.
I, I've said.
Please, come on, Don.
Uh, here's the deal, I've said that we need some policies in place for procurement guidelines. We haven't got here yet, we're working on them, and you're right, what you say did right. The night that I chose to break a tie in here, for a crook that was thirteen percent more than was a thirty thousand dollar vehicle, a thirty-five thousand dollar vehicle, whatever it was, it was thirteen percent, I had no guidelines, but now we were starting to get in a lot higher unit, and to me, I had talked to the person, and given them the opportunity that morning to understand they needed sharper offensive, if they ended up tied, I would not feel comfortable spending taxpayers' money at thirteen percent. Because if you ask ten people, will you spend thirty, four hundred dollars more to buy the same vehicle in town, ten out of ten households would say absolutely not for the same car. That being said, the night that we rushed to judgment on the vehicle, the other vehicle, um, I would have felt, would have been something we would shop local, and we should have bought, I, 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 I understand your.
That one was only ten percent.
Absolutely, by far it was. It was, but the bottom line is, that's the past, we made this vote that night because of the fact of what we talked about, it wasn't against anybody, it wasn't any one choice over the other group of people. One took longer to get the bid in, uh, we had had experience with Lennox, it seemed like the, the warranty and the ratings of what I'd done versus a Goodman, the store ratings was a little higher going into the meeting, is what, of the value, I have no experience with Goodman whatsoever. Um, so I was comparing those as far as how they were rated. Um, it was, it was a better unit as far as overall performance and, and, and life and expectancy, that's what I looked at before we came to the meeting. You had had experience with it, and we kind of talked about it, and that's how we ended up with it.
I made it very clear, I would buy another Goodman again, I won't buy another Goodman again, I will spend the extra money to remodel my house, put in a new furnace in there. Goodman is not a good brand, I have to actually open my unit up every year, and main, and brush off a sensor, and the thing's only three or four years old, shouldn't have to do that on a new unit. So, I would not buy a Goodman.
And I.
So. Now, Don, Don, if you have a problem with this, maybe you should show up to the meetings.
Well, here, here's, here's this thing I'll say.
He just wants to hypocrite.
Let's step back and see.
I don't like somebody sitting here saying that, if you want to be a part of the discussion, show up, I am not a hypocrite.
He had to work that night to make money for us to buy.
No, no, no.
Um, hey, 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 everybody, hold on, let's take a breath. You're making a point from something that goes back in the past that you felt was done wrong, okay, I get that. I, I, I buried the brunt of a lot of, a lot of crap from that whole deal, both sides of that thing, both those two, two things we did that night, okay? I haven't run around wanting to point fingers at anybody or carry on, I'm saying we need to put some things in place that, that cleans this up, so it's easy for us to have a guideline of when is it too expensive to shop local. I believe we should give any local person the opportunity to buy. In this case, Don, absolutely, that question, it was not a prejudice over one or the other, it was a brand over another, okay? So, there was no way that should we attack, I think, anybody's credibility in what we were doing, because I think we were doing the best faith to purchase what we thought was best for the city, for the city's money, I, I don't think it was anything like that. I understand your point, and it goes back, but that's now in the past, all we can do is look at how do we make ourselves better as a group and as a team, and put things in place that make the guidelines, the policies, and procedures in place that might guide us when we get in these situations of purchases of over twenty thousand dollars, over thirty thousand dollars, and we always have an out because you have a right to say, because this person has not paid your bills on a regular basis, that thing, have outstanding judges, have lean, they do contracted work, or where it may be, you may not want to do that with them, right? So, you might take a higher bid at that point, but we need to put some things in place, and that's missing. And so, because that was missing, it put us in a spot that made me have to make a decision, and it put us in a spot that we made kind of a knee, knee-jerk reaction on the other one, and ended up buying something probably shit-bull, and I would tell you that, I told that to everybody in this room after that, that was done. The reason I, I grant us having another meeting, one thing, although she hasn't made, there wasn't any discussion that night, okay, still ended up what it was, on the, on the car, or I think it was, we bought a car at this point, I can't remember. Uh, but anyway, so, look, the last thing I want us to do is attack one another, we gotta work as a team, we get frustrated, um, and I want to take a higher road when I'm frustrated, and I want us to do that as a team, too, so, I don't want to think at all, uh, and I understand your desire, your integrity, and our integrity is all very important in this room, and I think we're feeling attached.
Well, I guess, yeah, but it's my integrity, that's what I'm talking about.
No, no, I, I, I understand it, I, 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 I understand, so, that being said, it's, it's, that's what it was, that's what it is, and uh, I don't know why somebody's not in a meeting or at a meeting, that, that's irrelevant to a point, um, and just, I would ask everybody, let me know if you're not gonna be at the meeting, because I need to know, because if we're not gonna have a forum before we even start, and I can, make sure she shows up, and I can know kind of what's going on if I had people arriving in or something for a specific thing, if I might have three, a couple of two people going, right? So, that's what's important to me, to come out of this thing, please let me know, or Heather, don't have to get on the mic, Heather, just so we know, does that make sense? Do we do that? We gotta stay up some playing rules here, a little bit. Um, a lot of those have been missed over the years because we've grown, and he kept up with some stuff, so, uh, I can appreciate, I can appreciate the passion, uh, but we can't misplace it, guys and ladies. Um, that being said, let's get back to the consent agenda, I think we've addressed what, what Don, Don brought up. Did we take care of what you were saying about the, did we make the change on the, uh, who closed the meeting, the first and the second, to adjourn? And what else do we have as far as the consent agenda?
I'm moved that we accept the consent agenda.
Okay, the first, the second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, now, accounts payable over twelve hundred fifty dollars, equalling four hundred fourteen thousand two hundred and three dollars and ninety cents. I will say that you and I, Heather, will be working on putting together that policy of procedures of, of purchasing a guideline, purchasing guideline for us to have.
It's already on the agenda for tonight.
Okay, good, I didn't know if we were there yet.
We're there.
What is that, the weed killer, is that just chemical, or is that somebody coming in and doing?
It's chemical.
That's the, just the chemical, Heather?
What page is that on?
Uh, one seventy.
I'm moved that we accept the accounts payable over one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for a grand total of four hundred and fourteen thousand two hundred and three dollars and ninety cents.
Say it. The first and second to accept the accounts payable over twelve hundred fifty dollars, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All right. Faces. Now, the action agenda. So, you wanna tell us about?
Yep, this is the procurement policy that we presented last week, asked for comments, Robert, um, sent me some questions, and I changed a couple of things based on his comments. Um, but really, it's, it's very similar to what we already have, I just kind of think that's exactly what I changed. Just, just a few wording.
Uh, there was one thing about where, if we move forward with the lowest reasonable and responsible bidder on a project, we negotiate them with their changes.
Yes.
Um, that, uh, if, uh, an agreement was not made, we would go to the second lowest responsible and reasonable bidder. Um, after that, if we could not work an agreement with the second, then we would go up to bid. And that was if it was outside of budget or something like that, and that, that was, I think, the biggest.
That was the biggest, most things were just wording issues, and then.
Titles off low bids, and it was usual type stuff.
Just clarify a little.
Would, uh, affect what we show, what showed up in the accounts payable over twelve fifty? Because I see all these different purchases of a thousand to, uh, five thousand, et cetera, et cetera.
Well, those are individual purchases, so, um.
But they still show up in the accounts payable over twelve fifty?
Yes, if it's over twelve fifty, and that's what you, if that's the threshold that you all still want, because it, years ago, it used to be seven hundred and fifty dollars, and we changed it to twelve fifty, so, if that's what the board still wants to see, is twelve fifty, that it will still be.
Anything above twelve fifty, yeah.
Anything above twelve fifty.
We don't, we don't wanna deal with all the.
I think one of the biggest changes incorporates the cards, and allows the department heads to have a five hundred dollar spending limit on the cards, and up to twenty-five hundred dollars a month, I mean, it cuts out POs and paperwork and.
It does, I mean, sometimes I sign purchase orders for a dollar twenty-nine.
Well, did you see, well, then we talked earlier about POs, right? I sign a lot of checks, you sign a lot while I'm not here, right, we sign a lot of checks, you estimated that a, a check was five dollars and sixty-one cents, if I'm remembering right.
Yeah, to profit all the way through.
And I don't, I think that's low.
Yeah.
I think that's very low, you heard what they said with a PO call, potentially could, right? So, it's, it's, it's gonna be a better for us to be able to have the ability to be flexible, be able to do this stuff without having to have paper POs, we run that one, it'll streamline, it'll help with overtime, it'll help with all kinds of things.
And then, um, eventually, we would like to look at the. And then eventually, we would like to look at the accounts payable option through Central Bank and that would give us an additional revenue share. At first, when they first brought it up, it seemed like it would be duplicating work that we're already doing. And then after another discussion with them about it and a little more demonstration, it would be really streamlined that way. We can upload a file from our accounts payable system to the accounts payable system on the bank. It's all on there. That's all we have to do. So pretty easy, pretty efficient, really. But that's not included in this yet. And then each, I did talk to Sydney, you know, about this. And her biggest comment concern was making sure that employees know that they're responsible for any purchases that they make that are not, say, that are inappropriate purchases. They should not be. And the form that they would have to sign, which was included in, last week, it's not on the resolution, but I can get you guys a copy of it. It does say that, that they have to, that they would be responsible and it could lead to disciplinary action, including termination.
If they use it for personal at all, I mean, if they pay it.
Yes.
Yes, because that's what we kept separate.
Yes.
I know that's.
Yeah, the biggest problem with these is accountability.
No, no. I mean, it should, there should be no, I pulled out the wrong thing, the wrong corner when I was dying. Well.
That that happens one time.
Yeah.
One, yeah.
Well, it shouldn't have more than one.
No.
It happens, it happens a second time.
Does the department just use the card? Hold one out or is it people?
That happens.
It would, it would be at the discretion of the department head. It would be issued to the department head so they are ultimately responsible. But if they need to give it to somebody to go to the parts store because they're not available, they can do that. They can designate someone to do that. But they're still responsible, responsible for making sure they get that receipt and reconciling and so they all get it worked. All the information. And then Donna doesn't have to spend as much time running people down finding if we purchased something for five dollars at La Crosse or at, you know, the auto parts store. And we can't find it because it was a seasonal park employee that did it and we just didn't know whose signature it was on the receipt, so.
There would be a huge time savings. That's what, I mean, that's really difficult. But if you looked at the thing earlier, it was easily eight hundred dollars a month, seven, five percent of time back, which is something that we're working on, right? So bottom line is. Bottom line is, if somebody gets that one, we all, we're tied enough. If somebody does something wrong discretionary spending, then they're not going to be employed to sit. And that's their fault.
And there will still be, so right now, we we require dual signatures on all purchase orders. It's not going to be any different with the system. So the department head has to go in and approve and then it would go to the chief or it would go to the manager, it would go to terror, it would go to me to have that second level of improvement.
Oh, that kind of.
Yeah.
And that's like, yes, that paper's going around.
Right.
And that has to be written out. So. Okay, so. I'm really interested in my reading. Don, would you read the? Don Rogers. I'll call him the other day.
Bill number?
Two, three, one, five.
Pardon?
Two, three, one, five.
Two, three, one, five. Move that bill number two, one, three, five begin its first reading by title only.
Second.
Two, three, one, five.
Two, three, one, five.
Second. Well, roll call.
Two, three, one, five.
Two, three, one, five.
Okay, do it. Agita.
Move the bill number two, three, one, five begin its first reading by title only.
Second. It's personal.
Oh, the bill, we already done that, okay. A resolution of the City of Central Newbury amending the formal written policy concerning purchasing and payments. Move that bill number two, three, one, five be adopted by roll call vote.
Second.
First and second, roll call vote. Just get it written, all right? So you're going to read, you're reading.
Yeah, read it.
Oh, you read, okay, it's all good, so, roll call vote.
Alderman Borman?
Yes.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Martin? Alderman Maglin?
Yeah.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Okay, passes. Resolution number?
R dash one nine dash one forty.
Prevention licenses, there's none legal, there's none purchasing, there's none on business? No business?
I just briefly, I'll keep this longer. We, all of the contracts have been signed by J T Holman for the demolition and they're getting sent back to, they said they were put in the mail today to go back to Lincoln Brown. So he's putting back together a packet that will come to us for our signature. And then maybe we'll get started. I'm not going to give any timeframes on that demolition because everything.
No, no.
Christmas is next year, Agita. Time for Holman to pray.
No, maybe during the homecoming.
Well, it's interesting, just so you know, I didn't realize that Mr. Holman, he was trying to give us a business card at the M L meetings, right? He's the mayor of Macon. I didn't realize that. But he's the mayor of Macon too, as well.
Yeah.
Just a little factoid.
Just send it out for the fact.
Yeah, it's kind of interesting. So anyway, and he said, I got sixty days to put it, tear it down, right? I said, no, you got a week. So anyway, all right, is that, so that's all on business, right? So new business. I have one that I went to, the M L meetings were really good. I think it's time well spent. We had a good mayor's breakout that went for an afternoon there and lunch was really good. It was really good networking, a lot of different things. You can go take his courses and coursework and specific topics about revenue, risk management, all kinds of things. It's really, really, really good, I think, format. I thought very beneficial, just to give you an update on that. One of the things that came from that was in the Sunshine Law class that I was in overview, video conferencing, I talked about that, doing video conferencing and being able to count, being able to vote. So that being said, I would like to make, look at making a change to video, to video conferencing account as a a present voting participant of the board. So if you were gone, you were somewhere done, done, wherever, you could, you could video conference in and be present that way and be a voting constituent of all of the board, right?
I mean, if we consider that, we need technology upgrading.
Could you have Skype on our laptop and a projector so everybody would see you?
I'm sorry, never mind.
Anyway, I I do have a draft policy that I already set up for fourteen days.
So that was just, just something you don't look at. Now, City Attorney.
My monthly report's in a packet. And then I also included three public hearings that will be before planning the zoning commission this Thursday at six thirty. Starting at six thirty, we'll have the Zero Lot Land Plan, the Elven District Public Hearing. We have one concerning short term rentals, which will encompass Airbnb and VRBO establishments, and then chickens. That's our public hearings for planning the zoning, so.
Sure. Melissa Ward Thursday. So. Any questions on that for her?
One more thing, I guess. We are, we we talked a little bit about the residential grants and right now we offer fifteen hundred dollar reimbursement for anybody that does a demo and takes it completely down, completes the demolition process for residential right now. With this grant, there is a thousand dollar contribution per property. And so I kind of wanted the board's opinion on how you wanted me to proceed. Because I have letters ready, but I, that's the part in it that I don't know exactly what the board's wishes would be. And I hesitate to put this in here, so, wrong, so that, and it comes back and it's incorrect. So they've seen it several different ways. Some cities put in the full thousand dollar contribution for each homeowner. So that's five hundred dollars less than what we currently do. However, if we do this, we have to be prepared to do, let's just say, if we have hundred percent compliance, twenty two thousand dollars is what we'd be looking at. We normally budget seventy five hundred a year. The some cities do a fifty fifty split, so the resident pays five hundred and we would pay five hundred. So that cuts about in half. We could look at a seventy five, twenty five split. We could do really whatever. I just would like some discussion and guidance from the board, how you'd like to proceed. Because I'd really like to get these letters out because part of stipulations is that they cannot have any utilities connected to these houses for a year.
Good. Can we, I got a question for you. How difficult is for us to ask for them to make kind of pay part of it? And if they can't, because knowing from experience already, a lot of these people's houses are in state affairs because they can't afford them and they've been left and everything else. It's like getting blood up, turn up potentially, get five hundred, seven hundred and fifty dollars or something. Could we ask for it, you know? And if those that can give it to us because they're out of town, they have a piece of property, they just don't want to keep up with it, but it could be torn down, they could pay, you know, that, we could get some of that probably. But some of these houses, I can guarantee you, people aren't going to have any money to pay at all. Or is it all or nothing?
If you pay a thousand dollars, you can be done with it.
Or you could come up with fifteen grand and then.
That would be my question.
Yeah.
I really don't know where we would have it in the budget. Now, if we paid half, we'd only have to come up with.
Four thousand.
Yeah. So that would be a lot easier, but. But I thought I could just work the money to say that they could pay up to a thousand dollars. So it could be a portion of that and maybe the whole thing, depending on what the board decides.
You may put it on a case by case basis, pay you pay a thousand dollars, meaning that it could be a one off that you can negotiate, so we can put that in there.
Well, on the other hand, we could always cap it. There's still the seventy five hundred dollars and when the money runs out for that year, the money runs out.
Well, the problem is, you do this grant thing, you got to do, it's all or nothing. You got to do all of them. I mean, it's, you got to jump in. I think they told us that Moley was doing sixty nine houses, I think it was, or something, all this.
Well, and we.
The houses in town are going to have their utilities off for a year.
Well, that's why I'm going to contact them now so that we can get this going. But.
You're right.
So a lot of these actually do already have utilities off their, of the twenty two. But now we also have to consider the fact that if C D B G comes in and they look around and let's say we've identified twenty two, but they actually find thirty houses, we have to get eighty percent of those people, those homeowners.
Of the thirty houses.
Of the thirty.
Eight.
We have to have eighty percent of the thirty.
You have to have twenty four houses at that point to be able, for them to qualify for the, for the grant.
But if they come in and they only see the twenty two that we see, then we need eighty percent of those twenty two.
Can I say something? I know I'm now exposed to it. But I don't understand why we're tearing down other people's houses, even with the grant. Make them tear the damn houses down.
Because they don't. We've been down this road. We're still down this road. They don't.
Have we sent letters?
That's why we owned an Eric Gansett building.
I know that, Lynn, but have we sent letters to these people and asked them?
Yes.
This will be the first round of abatement letters that I've done in the last year. I have not done any abatement letters for demolition, something that we've been looking at. I know Lynn used to and I can't speak to what I've not did.
You'll find that a lot that Lynn, Lynn, I can guarantee you, the same culprits we have today.
Yeah, and the, yes, past years I've been on here, we've sent several.
One question.
This is a problem around with the cat house too. We can't just go in and tear it down. We'd all love to go and do it.
Well, yeah, I mean, something first to think about. We need to think about this. See, I will leverage it. So. Consider it.
So I'll just change the order and say they could, potentially they could pay up to one thousand dollars. That could change depending on what.
Well, I can key us, look at the responses we get too from these people.
Sure.
They won't happen, they're not going to be there.
Yeah.
You can send one to the cat lady, but I don't know if she'll go send it back.
Your cat could get anything back.
Well, maybe not.
Sometimes she shows up.
Anyway, City Attorney, Sydney left this morning, I mean, just a little bit ago. She's been here all day, was at the, she'll be off with surgery. She's going to be out, I don't know, for a while. She's going to have a pre-stand to surgery, so she was here catching up, making sure the court got done today. And then she had to leave. We're expecting to have two and a half hours. But she left. City Clerk?
Just want to let everybody know that there's an M L Central Division meeting October the sixteenth at six o'clock P M. in Marshall, Missouri. You guys want to go, just let me know. I want to get signed up. Sydney might be signed too.
Anything else? Nope. As Mayor arrives, I will bring up because it's a time in this.
Yes, sir.
The situation with officers driving patrol cars. Everybody got an email from Heather, broke up into two, I think, three person emails based upon the fact that we have an officer that will move out of town and have to make a decision on that. And Sydney's weighed in with her thoughts from other towns and what they do of people of the police force driving home vehicles, that kind of thing. So you need to be looking at over, you got one from Sydney. Sydney thought she'd send it to everybody. Her response.
I don't believe I got an email from Sydney.
Well, I told her to make sure and I asked her to resend. You can forward it because we have to, we have an officer that's going to be moving out of town. Correct, Bob? Eventually, and requested the ability to build a drive vehicle, but it was much further.
Due, well, actually, we've reduced that quite a bit, so the fact is.
Okay.
Due to his assignment, he is a K nine officer. The fact is, is he has to have a vehicle because he is subject to call, just like you do myself or Lieutenant Chris. So that's, that's the, that's the deal, so. And currently, there's.
That was the one that I said I was. More lenient on was the K nine officer than others.
Right, right. And the fact is, is like I said, currently, right now, okay, I don't have any patrol car vehicles that go home to the officer that's outside town, right now, so. But like I said, the K nine officer is one that has to have a vehicle to complete his duties. Like I said, he is on call, subject to call, just like myself or Lieutenant Chris or anybody else.
But, but I'll say this.
Who pays for his travel time?
When he was hired, he was in the City of Central Newry, took the role. Correct?
Well, yeah, I mean, yeah, we've been, but there's nothing in place currently.
Well, there's going to be. We're going to put something.
Well, I'm just saying that's.
I'm just saying, we're going to.
But who pays for his, for the overtime for him to, who pays for his travel time when he's called in? Is that his time or is that our time?
He, he, he's at eighty six hours on a pay period, just like anybody else.
But if he's called in for, you know, after he's gone.
It's less than ten miles, Don.
Less than ten miles?
Less than ten miles.
Go on, Mike.
Five minutes? So, I, I understand that, okay? This discussion wouldn't have even come up. It probably should have. It was an overlook on my part and on, Heather and I talked about this. The fact is, there's nothing in policy currently about vehicles, nothing.
Like a lot of things, we don't have in place.
Nothing in, it's just been general policy.
And and recommendations from, you know, Sydney's very big.
I, I, I think we should look at Sydney's email. I think it's based upon fact of kept in a lot of other places and liability and generality of the law should be looked at. And I think it's time for us to take a look at it and figure out what that looks like. I got asked a lot of questions about the police department. Me and the chief have talked a couple of times just recently. Good discussion after, I think, one, one night, when you got it worked up and didn't need to that way. There's times I like, I work somebody contesting, but that was the case. But that being said, the police department is in the public eye all of the time. Simple as that. All the time. I've heard all kinds of statements from, why do we have to have so many cars? Do we need all these cars? I have no idea what we need to run the police department. I haven't done that, that's not my forte. I have no idea. I'm just the new mayor, okay? I was asked a lot of questions about that. I cannot believe that you folks on this, as aldermen and running, or being, have not been asked at times about, and I know there was a response, somebody sent it to him, of why does every officer have a car to drive home? Seems like it's a waste of taxpayer money. I've had all kinds of questions like that, okay? So, I'm being just transparent here. This isn't my agenda. I have nothing against the police department or the chief of the police department. I think the police department we have was governed and ran by the aldermen before your time. And you inherit what the team and what you got and what's been commonplace and what's been acceptable. And I think as we look at the public and the public's concern, we have to take that seriously if we have enough of it. I've had a lot of questions. We gotta be able to answer those questions when we walk out this door, folks. Unitedly, we have to make decisions, and we have to put things in place that clear up the gray areas we have with not having anything in writing, not having a policy, right? And we have to do a lot of that, and we need to start doing a lot of that, all the way to as crazy as the chickens is, but code enforcement. What is unsightly? Okay, you're trying to, trying to force somebody, they bought boards that put over their front porch down here by the senior center to cover the junkyard, okay? It's still a horny thing. I, I think they could get on that show. That being said, I don't know if we want that kind of public relations, but anyway. That being said, so let me make that statement out loud in front of God and everybody about my intentions of what I'm doing and making sure that our budget's correct. So, when I look smart, I say, "No, we're right in line where we need to be." Bob and I talked about it. I have never had a police department. I have no idea. I do no budgets. I don't have an audit budget. I don't have a look at it. I don't have a bank account. Right? Is, do they do it on dispatching? Do they do, do they pay their own electric and their own air? Do they, you know, all of those things in their budget? Do they replace air conditioning, all that kind of stuff? So, that's what we're looking at. We're also looking at policy procedures and the perception of what the police department looks like with new leadership in place, relatively new leadership in place. Okay, so that's, as mayor eyes, read what you got. Sydney's gonna make sure everybody's got it, and then let's go from there. Let's figure out where we need to be.
I'm pretty sure I...
I've requested, if she said to me, I know I didn't get it, so somebody forward it.
Well, I mean, I got it. I'll make sure, will it be me?
It's for everybody.
Sydney's comments were roughly, there's liability if a police officer is driving a vehicle home, especially if it's out of town, that's a liability on the city. And then we should have a formal policy. Those were essentially what she said.
Yeah, let me, let me send it out to you all. You all, you know, I want you all to get it yourself. I want you to reflect on it. I don't wanna drive this discussion, other than bring it up and say it's a discussion we need to have. And I want all of you to look at and self-reflect and think about what constituents in your ward has told you. When you're running for mayor, I mean, for alderman or mayor or whatever position it may be, then what does that look like?
I've had more calls on how many police cars are people's driveways, not necessarily driving outside of town, but how many police cars are people's driveways?
I, I, I can get it. So, but my point is, I'll make sure, I, I can't. Can you get it? It's not a meeting?
No, but I can send it to people that didn't get it. So, I split my email half and half.
Yeah, I thought that was weird.
So, she responded to half and I'll the other half. So, I'll just send it to you.
Well, you all have it. If you didn't get it, send an email to her if you don't have it by tomorrow. Sydney, order and ask for a copy of Sydney's email. Is that fair?
Okay. I can understand often with taking cars home, because you either take them home or you leave them up here if you...
And how many times have you ever heard that all the cars sitting out front of the police department?
Right. You know, there, there's a deterrent effect of cars sitting around the town. The other thing is, is if you leave them up here, then you're gonna use them up here. And that means you're putting three times as many miles on them in a day as what you, what the officer take them home.
Well, you can only drive so many with so many on duty. I don't understand.
Well, I realize that, but if you have three shifts, which we have somewhat less than that now, but if there's three shifts and you're driving and those cars are being driven by different people on all three shifts, you're usually, you're putting three times as many miles on it as if the officer takes it home. And so, it's a matter of replacement. You replace them much faster.
I don't follow you at all.
You still have, you still have people on those shifts, and you still have the same amount of miles being driven because you drive on those shifts.
We got a lot of vehicles.
If, if you, if you...
If you got five cars, and people drive a hundred thousand miles a year on them, or if you've got eight cars and you still have a hundred, five hundred thousand miles across all of them, some will last longer than some will not. But we, a few years ago, a couple, uh, two years ago or so, we talked about going to less cars, newer cars, and rotating them out every four or five years, knowing that we would have shared cars, but we were gonna be buying new to us or very fairly new cars versus the older cars we were buying before. But we would have less cars, and we knew we would be putting more miles on them.
Something discussed. Look at the email and something for us to discuss here in the future, okay? That's all.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made, but second to adjourn on favor. All right, if any say oppose, you know, most. All right, thank you.
Don, thanks for saying it.
Yeah.
I haven't even needed it.
Yes, yeah, one quick, easy question.
I am thirty-nine.
Thirty minutes?
Huh? Oh, I'm thirty-nine years old.
It's not five years, I'm gonna be fifty.
What?
Uh, maybe Lincoln.
Yep, Lincoln Brown. Lincoln Brown?
Oh, is that his name?
Yes.
God, we have this conversation.
Um, he was very original planning.
That was what I wanted, kind of, Lincoln Brown.
And he thinks that, but I mean, he, he, he didn't even take a, I gave him a long... Yeah, it's all, I told my insurance thing before, so he gave me a ticket for not moving into the first.
Okay.
So, all, do all I can do is just call and say that.
I know, I got you.
I'm sorry.
I got my paper taken wrong.
I had to get my bag.
It's not gonna be a lot.
That's a far as this goes, man. I got you. I got you. I thought, Nick, don't you, turn down the chicken.
And I've heard that, but I got it.
I really had to be a big guy to be the mayor. I was scared by it. No, 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 I understood. I, I, no, no, I let you go because I, I didn't understand. I don't, hey, how do you shut it off?
Huh?
How do you shut it?
Hold the little button down here.
Okay.
Here, right here.
Oh, down here. I can climb up right here.